I am glad you reached and stood by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the consent agenda. Their discussion, if not, I will accept the motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Shay, second by Jorgensen to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Scheduled session, Mark Shoemaker, Director, Conservation, and Eric Hough, President, Conservation Board, Conservation Update.
Thank you, Susan. I know, I think you greet the board on why I'm here, but nonetheless, I have a statement that I would like to read. Members of the Board, it is with a heavy heart that I sit before you today. A true steward of nature, a visionary leader, and our dear friend, Mark Shoemaker, submitted his retirement announcement as Executive Director of Potawatomi County Conservation to the Conservation Board, effective at the end of August. At our meeting last Tuesday, after great pause, we accepted it. For almost thirty years, Mark has been at the helm of our organization, guiding us with wisdom, passion, and an unwavering commitment to environmental preservation. Mark's journey with Potawatomi County Conservation is woven into the very fabric of our organization's history, as he has been the leader for pretty much half of it. From the moment he stepped through our doors as an intern, his dedication to protecting and enhancing our natural resources has been unparalleled. Under his guidance, our conservation efforts have flourished, and our natural areas have expanded through acquisitions such as Wheeler Grove, additional property at Hitchcock Nature Center, and Mount Crescent Ski Hill, leaving a lasting legacy for future generations to enjoy. The cabins he spearheaded at Arrowhead have raised the bar statewide. Throughout his tenure, Mark has been a beacon of leadership and inspiration to all who have had the privilege of working alongside him. His innovative approaches, strategic foresight, exceptional grant writing, and steadfast determination have propelled our organization to new heights, earning him the admiration and respect of his peers, partners, and stakeholders all across the great state of Iowa. Beyond his professional accomplishments, Mark's impact on our organization can be felt on a personal level. He has not only been a mentor and a leader, but also a trusted friend and confidant to many, including myself. His genuine kindness, humility, and approachability have created a culture of collaboration and camaraderie that has enhanced the lives of all who have had the pleasure of working with and knowing him. As Mark embarks on the next chapter of his life, we are filled with mixed emotions. We will miss his leadership, his expertise, and his relentless dedication, but we take solace in knowing that what he leaves behind will endure long after his departure. Mark's passion for conservation and his commitment to protecting our natural heritage will continue to inspire us as we carry forward the work he has so selflessly championed. On behalf of the entire Potawatomi County Conservation Board, I want to express our deepest gratitude for Mark's years of dedicated service, exemplary leadership, and unwavering commitment to our mission. His impact on our organization and our county is immeasurable, and his presence will be sorely missed. Thank you, Mark, for your dedication and commitment to conservation, your invaluable contributions to our county, and the lasting impact you have had on each and every one of us.
Did you write that, Eric?
I did.
We need to add him to our grant writing.
What's that?
AI.
No.
Is there anyone else from the board who'd like to speak? We have a lot of this fan club here in the audience, it looks like.
That covers it from all of us.
Really was a good summary. Mark's dedication to conservation and just helping preserve our great parks, natural resources in our area, less hills, thanks, Mark.
Thank you, Mark.
Important one went to the Conservation Board, so. Now the ones that had to accept it.
The newly-elected supervisor, Mark, you were very helpful to me, or learn what's going on, how things work at the county, and though you were very gracious, I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
As a retiree, you will be busy or volunteering for this and that.
Y'all messes. Y'all everybody here.
Actually, moment, I think we have our new ski lift operator from the.
Well, how can the Board of Supervisors assist the Conservation Board going forward?
So we have, I've already started the process with Jana to work towards getting the successor for Mark. We approved a job description last Tuesday at the meeting, and then we decided that a committee approach would be better. So we have Chris and Jerry have agreed to spearhead that committee from our side. Mark asked Suzanne Watkins, oh, Watkins, Watson, excuse me, to join that as well, and we would like two members from your board to be part of that group as well, to do the interviewing, get it down to the finalist, and then the, our board would then interview the finalist and select our next director. That's kind of what we outlined, unless you guys have additional thoughts.
I think that sounds like a solid process. I would like to be on the selection committee, and would you be willing to serve on that committee as well? I know you're awfully close to it, and I know Tim has served on the Conservation Board for a long time, and I just think we need a fresh set of eyes on it. So two of us that haven't been closely engaged with the Conservation Board will serve on the selection committee.
That sounds great. You know, I trust the judgment of two of the any five of you of the board, so. I think, I haven't talked with Jana about this yet. We're working on posting here shortly, one of one of thirty days, and then looking in that early, you know, early May timeframe to really get to interviewing and kind of have May, early June be our timeframe to get it, get our, get the right candidates selected.
I think most of the heavy lifting will be done by Jana and her crew, so by that, at that point, when we get to really get together and making decision whether that's three people, two people, or six people, that'll be whittled down, so, you know, at that point, we'll have a solid overview of who may or may not be coming in, whether it's inside or outside of the county.
Ideally, we would like to have someone hired and start it in the mid-July to early August timeframe to give some overlap. One thing that Mark has not done, he has not been a lame duck, and so there's going to be a considerable number of projects that are in the works that he will pass on to his successor as we move forward.
I'll weigh in on behalf of the subjects of all your assistance.
You all staring?
I do not have any, I don't have anything else. The last thing is, we will, Tim and I have discussed this for years. One thing we're going to do is reevaluate Mark's salary to make sure that it is appropriate, given the current environment. Jan, I think, has started that process. She's nodding down there. So making sure that we have the right number to attract the right candidate.
I'd like to thank everybody from the Conservation Board and from our parks departments. I see several of you in the room. Thank you all for taking the time to come and for this historic moment. Mark, thank you.
You give him a lifetime, Mark Bass.
Liam got that far yet. If he's running the chairlift, then we'll give him a ski pad.
Not qualified.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
You want all of conservation? Your whole group? Okay, okay, thank you. You're going to need a swivel, Susan.
Yes, you do. Yes, you do.
You get front and center. On our door, and she goes. Yes, do one of Susan or get down on the floor. She's standing on her chair.
Tell her, when he gets settled, then I'll find a spot. Okay. Middle Eric. So moved. This is just part of the.
You'll be fine.
Ready?
Ready. Susan, go to your right, just a little bit. On my arm. There you go, perfect. All right, thank you. Oh, good job. You got an applause from.
What's that?
You got an applause from.
See, Jerry.
All right, next on the agenda, discussion and/or decision to approve and sign Resolution Number 22-2024 regarding Compensation Board's Recommendation for Elected Officials for Fiscal Year 24-25. In front of you, you have the resolution that we talked about in the budget study session last week, after the original motion was denied, and we have a 6% salary increase for the county sheriff and county attorney, and 5% salary increase for the Potawatomi County elected officials, including the auditor, recorder, and treasurer, and the supervisors will have no increase in salary for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024. Thoughts? Comments?
I like it.
I know it was educational and eye-opening from the material that Matt brought forward last week. Who incidentally, when I was at the ISAC Spring Conference last week, that was one of the recommendations I heard during the human resources session, was about creating a webinar that could be posted on the ISAC site for boards dealing with compensation boards and kind of what the expectations are and the history behind it, just to provide more education. And I thought that was kind of interesting, that it wasn't just our county struggling with that, that other counties had the same issue. Okay, other thoughts?
Do you still feel that their deputies and assistants' salaries are based upon this raise? Still think we should have got a little closer to what the Compensation Board wanted?
Jim?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Belt, second by Jorgensen. Additional discussion? Melvin, will you call the rule, please?
Cameron Miller.
Aye.
Supervisor Jorgensen.
Aye.
Shay.
Nay.
Wickman.
Aye.
And Bill.
Aye.
Okay, motion is carried. Thank you. Next up, John Rasmussen, Engineer, Discussion and/or Decision to Approve and Sign Joint Project Agreement with Harrison County for L-34 Resurfacing Project FM-C04397-55-43. Did I get it all, John?
I think so. Harrison County is the lead county on a resurfacing project, mostly in Harrison County. They're starting just south of the curve there on L-34 by Whipperville, and then we have about a mile of shared road, as L-34 runs east-west, so we're paying for a part of that project, and they're coming a little bit into the county, so it all makes sense when we do the constructions.
Asphalt overlay?
Yes.
Do you know who the contractor is on that, John?
I don't think it's been let yet.
Okay.
John, what's the timeframe on that?
It'll be this summer's project.
All right, awesome. Do you have that agreement, honey?
Yes.
Explain to me 3B, would you please?
So they're paying for it out of the foreign market funds. We'll transfer funds from our foreign market account to Harrison County for the construction costs.
Okay, how much for Division 1?
So I don't have those breakdowns for me. Division 1 is from the, it's about a quarter mile north of the interstate. It changes from concrete to asphalt there through those curves, so the Division 1 is 100% within Potawatomi County, so we're going to pay 100% of those costs, but it's probably just 500 feet or 400 feet of pavement. And then Division 2 will be the east-west portion that's on the county line, so we'll pay for 50% of those costs.
I make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion Shay, second by Belt to approve additional discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, John.
Thanks.
Next up, Becky Lenahan, Tax and Finance Officer, Auditor's Office, Discussion and/or Decision on Amendment for Fiscal Year 2023-24 Budget at Setting Date for Public Hearing on Said Amendment.
Good morning, everyone. I sent you an email last week with the amendment information, so it's self-explanatory, got your department's on there. I will note that our revenue is higher than what we're going to amend for expenses due to the increased interest in the Treasurer's Office and the U.S. Marshals contract in the jail. This public hearing will be set for Tuesday, April 9, at 10:00 a.m.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Shay, second by Jorgensen, to approve setting the time and the date for the public hearing on an amendment to the fiscal year 2023-24 budget for April 9, at 10:00 a.m.
Becky, what is, what is the additional expense in the jail?
The jail, there is $150,000 for maintenance, jail maintenance building, $100,000 for overtime increase, and then $83,000 for the U.S. Marshal contract.
For what?
The marshal contract.
For negotiation.
The third part, for negotiations. I believe that is.
Becky, that jail maintenance facility, are those, are those funds that are coming out of the sheriff's forfeiture fund?
No, this is coming out of the general fund, out of the jail budget.
Sheriff's. In addition, we have $137,000 aside in our bond, that covers the, all the funding needed for that project.
Then you said that you're adding $100,000 on the overtime line?
Yes, sir.
That's just over $800,000 in overtime expenses, and I sure wish we could do something to minimize that, that's quite a bit. Okay, thank you.
All right, we have a motion by Shay, and a second by Jorgensen. All in favor? Opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, Becky Lenahan, Tax and Finance Officer, Auditor's Office, Discussion and/or Decision on Resolution Fixing Date for a Meeting on the Proposal to Reallocate Certain Unspent Proceeds of the General Obligation Capital Loan Notes Series 2020A of Potawatomi County, Iowa, and Providing for Publication of Notice thereof.
Again, this, I emailed all of you what the notice of the hearing was. We have some residual funds left in these bonds that we need to get used up and spent, so with the help of Aylers and Cooney Bond Council, they've drawn up these notices so that we can have the necessary hearings to get those funds reallocated, so we can get those spent. The first one, 2020A, there's not to exceed $232,515,90.
That's 2028.
That's the 2028, yes, sir.
When do you want that, Becky? Public hearing?
The public hearing will be on the 9th day of April at 10:00 a.m.
9th of April, 10.
Motion by Wickman, second by Belt, to approve setting time and date for public hearing on General Obligation Capital Loan Notes Series 2020A for April 9, at 10:00 a.m. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Okay, Becky, another one, Discussion and/or Decision on Resolution Fixing Date for a Meeting on the Proposal to Reallocate Certain Unspent Proceeds of the General Obligation Capital Loans Note Series 2021A of Potawatomi County, Iowa, and Providing for Publication of Notice thereof.
Yes, that one is, these will all be for the same date, the April 9, 2024. That 2021A is not to exceed $82,590. And these, these funds will be, that's to be determined where they're going to go. I think Mitch will discuss it with you.
What was that amount again? Not to exceed?
Eighty-two, eighty-two thousand five ninety.
Same thing, April 9 to 10?
Yes, sir.
I'll move that.
And by Wickman, second by Shay, to approve setting time and date for public hearing on the General Obligation Capital Loan Notes Series 2021A for April 9, at 10:00 a.m. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. We have another one, Becky Lenahan, Discussion and/or Decision on Resolution Fixing Date for a Meeting on the Proposal to Reallocate Certain Unspent Proceeds of the General Obligation Capital Loan Notes Series 2022 of Potawatomi County, Iowa, and Providing for Publication of Notice thereof.
Same date and time, April 9, 2024. That amount is $350,094, and these are not to exceed amounts. We do have some few things, mainly with conservation, that they're getting spun up, so these may not be quite that much, but not to exceed.
April 9 to 10, I'll move that.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Wickman, second by Shay, to approve setting time and date for public hearing on the General Obligation Capital Loan Notes Series 2022 for April 9, at 10:00 a.m. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Becky, do you want to give a recap of your.
Motion carried? Sorry.
I'm sorry.
Just following your Robert's Rules of Order that we provided you.
No, I think I preceded your calling for the motion and checked it before you did. I just thought maybe Becky could give a recap of our events, so Friday afternoon and Saturday, how we got along.
It's been a long weekend. Dixie and I stayed on Friday evening to pull the file from Department of Management. That's 4:01 p.m. We're moving right along, and then Department of Management had a glitch, so we had to wait while they figured that out. Was supposed to be at 4:30. It was about 5:00 when we finally started uploading the file from Department of Management into our Tyler system, and then onto the mailing system. That takes quite some time. We were told up to a couple of hours for them to get everything up and processed, then I think they had some issues on their end. So Dixie and I left here about 7:45. I stayed on call. I do have access to my email and stuff at home for them to get the file. Finally, at 9 o'clock, I said I.
I let her go to bed.
I told Melvin, I says, I'm done, I can't do any more tonight, so I did get up Saturday morning and took a few hours to get that file looked at, tried to spot check things, and we're praying, that fingers crossed, that things are all okay in the spots they're supposed to be in, and everything gets to the taxpayers as it should. I have worked on some statements and worked with Craig a little bit, and Susan, and other counties to set up a press release that Craig's going to put out on the social media and our website. Susan's asked that we do a spreadsheet to track all of that information. David's worked on that, and I let all of the auditor team know they'll be getting calls. I will also let all of you know that you will be getting calls, as it does have your phone number on here. I talked to Jeanette this morning, she has copies of the letter. Any other questions you have, I'd be happy to answer them, or if I don't know the answer, I will find the answer and get back to you or the taxpayers, so hopefully this won't be too painful, but I anticipate a lot of calls. People aren't going to understand this, and I think it's just crazy that we have to do this, but.
And we are kind of getting the cart before the horse, because they'll be receiving information on a parcel that they may not own when Lee sends out the tax statements. Because maybe they sold their house in the last few weeks, or some, before August, before, before we roll over from the accessory.
These letters, though, they don't have a parcel number on them, they don't have an address on them, other than the mailing address. It's just the tax district, so.
Is that a state requirement, Becky?
All of this is state.
Yeah. So they don't know what they're doing either.
Well, and it was interesting, when you met with the legislators on Wednesday, I gave them a.
Well, and it was interesting when you met with the legislators on Wednesday, I gave them a copy of the statement, a copy of our press release, and they had no clue what it was about.
Well, Dan Dawson may have, but I don't.
Yes, it's really, it's really crazy, and it's going to give the people the wrong idea. They're going to add these up, say, that should be my tax rate. When in all actuality, you don't have your brucellosis, your assessor, your, um,
Extension.
Extensions, your colleges, those don't, they're not included on here, so I don't know how it's educating the taxpayers.
They're going to see that negative number at the bottom and think their taxes are going down.
Yes, exactly.
Becky, this is going to be a battle, you see.
Yes, sir.
What's what's the total cost of it?
Well, I think, I believe it was about twenty thousand.
Yeah.
The master's touch.
How many?
Not master's touch.
Yeah.
Master's touch.
Yeah, we said about twenty thousand dollars, but that was based on over fifty thousand, fifty thousand parcels.
Okay, so we don't have all of those cost in yet, yep. We initially sent for their quote, they wanted twenty thousand dollars. That doesn't include all the manpower and, you know, the time and effort that that went in, um, on our our end and with everybody, the Department of Management, what the phone calls that we're all going to have to screen, so it it's really, that's kind of what Susan, maybe with her information sheet, if we can get all that information, um.
So this is basically an unfunded mandate.
Yes.
State.
This, as well as the, uh, uh, credits, the exemptions that they're doing for that homestead over sixty-five.
Thank you. Thank you for your.
How how long did you work Saturday?
Two and a half, three hours.
Thank you for doing.
You're welcome.
Really appreciate that. Thanks for staying Friday, too.
And you said the statements went out in the mail already?
Yes, I got an email.
I saw it this morning.
Later came in yesterday. I had the day off yesterday, but I did do a couple. Thanks.
I think they sent email on the eighteenth, which was yesterday. So you might be getting phone calls in the morning.
Because I know Council Bluffs is doing their public hearing on March twenty-fifth. So they'll have the statement just in time for that.
Right, and we were required to have them sent out by the twentieth, so a very short turnaround, you know, we couldn't get access to any of that information until the fifteenth, and they have to be out by the twentieth, so.
So if you do get phone calls, this applies to our public hearing second. Well, this weekend, we got, I got a lot of calls from the Pigeon Creek Drainage District, which ain't anything to do with the Board of Supervisors, but they want to know why we're raising their taxes. No, it's not us. So they they still don't get that sheet, but I looked at that a couple of times. I don't get it.
General public does not understand taxes, um, and what the counties, cities, schools do and and what it, you know, what it pays for. This is supposed to be an education piece, but I I just feel my personal opinion is that it's just going to confuse everyone.
More confusion. I learned something from John the other day. There's eleven county, yes, you, your job, eleven county engineers whose levy rate went down, they cannot raise their local effort.
Right, so you're required to tax seventy-five percent of your appraised value, so they were so low, the praise value went up so much, they're going to be within the below the seventy-five percent, which pushes another side of the state to cut off some of their funding as sanctions. So there's eleven counties facing sanctions for being below the minimum local effort. They're trying to fix that, and our group is sending a letter to, uh, I forget the gal's name, in Eastern Iowa, to work on that, but they didn't think they're going to get it fixed this year, but next, I think the DOT is just going to have to provide some sort of administrative fix, but.
And they're below seventy-five, did they deserve, uh, state money go to zero, or has it graduated?
They're not allowed to spend foreign market funds anymore, so for Pot County, we have six million dollars in foreign market funds, so that's the lion's share of their construction fund they can't spend, and dollar for dollar, they lose out of their, uh, roju's tax funds, so if they're ten thousand below, they get ten thousand less from their from the state. Yeah, tax, so it's, it hits pretty hard quickly. I don't know that a lot of people are far below, but it's it's really not fair that they can't tax for and be sanctioned for it the same way. We're not one of the eleven, so.
Becky, that, uh, the first table on the second page, that first Council Bluffs is schools, correct?
Yes.
We need, is it too, is it too late to put that in there?
Yes, sir, that's been discussed. Very confusing, I know.
When you go to the far right, um, authority percent of tax, is that the average percentage of what each tax taxing district charges to make up that hundred percent or one dollar? Thirty-two percent of your dollar Council Bluff goes to Council Bluff Schools? Is that how you read that?
I would have to go and look and figure it, Tim. These things all pulled in from our Tyler system, and so without looking, I mean, I, we've checked our information right here real closely, uh, that still needs to be determined in my letter. My example I have right now is different than the one that was sent to me late on Saturday. I think they may have fixed the, uh, Council Bluff City, Potawatomi County, Council Bluff Schools. Might be changed on the original letters, the one out. This is from the test file. I sent you.
Good. When I was at ISAC last week, um, Melvin did a good job of coordinating a meeting between our legislators.
Actually, Brent Seeger's did, I just called him and handed.
Well, you got the ball rolling, but we had Montgomery, Mills, Potawatomi County, all at the table with, um, Seek. Help me out here.
Seeger's was there, Costello, Dawson, and Winchittle, and Tom Moore.
Yes, and it it was just eye-opening for a lot of people. I mean, we talked about our issues, and when you hear it from one county, it's one thing, but when you have affirmation from three counties that it's an issue, they paid attention. We also talked about Senate File four forty-one, which is, was proposed in the Senate for making a statewide ordinance for wind and solar and the carbon capture as well. And everybody in the room looked at us like, that's not on our plate, it's not going anywhere, we haven't seen it, it's so Winchittle said he would look into it just to make sure, but.
I think they were, uh, doing some other, uh, legislation, but it wasn't that detail, the more of a vague thing that's supported, uh, alternative energy or something. It was really, uh, uh, an ordinance, uh, requiring setbacks. That's. Was it different than ours, less than ours?
It was.
It wasn't, didn't even address any of those issues. It was, it addressed something totally.
Well, what I was told by somebody who knows is it depends on the wording, because how you how you end up interpreting that could make difference.
Whether they.
As far as county ordinances go, or valid or not valid at the state level.
Yeah. Um, I don't. And maybe they didn't know what was exactly in the.
I don't think they did either, yeah.
But, well, uh.
There's a, there's a lot of, there's a lot of high-dollar rollers that are that's wanting this thing to pass.
Right, right.
Some of the other sessions I sat in on that I've got takeaways I need to research are the opioid settlement best practices, um, an EMS levy and EMS best practices. That was kind of informational that I wanted to read more into.
Nothing's going through this year with that, though, is there?
No.
Yeah, there's, there's something already on EMS. If you put a boat up and it's, you get sixty percent, there's, there's a county that's got a EMS levy already.
Yeah, there there are some counties that have it.
Right.
Right.
There's, there's some tools out there for that.
Anyway, those are my takeaway assignments. I want to dive into more on those.
And with that EMS, they're looking to put two people on each department?
It it's on a county-by-county needs basis.
Okay.
Some of the best practices were to staff or what's currently volunteer ambulance service during the daytime to staff during those hours. And then to rely on volunteers for the evening shifts, but it's becoming a problem across the state and nationwide. We are just running out of volunteer firefighters and volunteer EMS. There's a time commitment. It's one of those things you can't dumb down the restrictions so that you can get people certified. It just makes no sense, and there's just a huge time commitment with for no compensation. Anybody else have meetings to report on?
Last week, VA, conservation, plus hills, uh, and then on Friday, we had a lunch with Deb Durham. Number of her, so that went good.
Anytime you can spend with Deb Durham.
She's got a lot of energy.
Yeah.
Carol's got a lot of energy. Good for us.
Right, and I'm assuming we didn't have anybody sign up for public comments of study session. Want to do the budget first or the secondary employment policy first?